Good morning, welcome everyone. I'm John Colwell, Chair of this Power Authority Board and want to welcome all of my fellow members, or virtually all of my fellow members. Trustee McKibben was unable to join us, but we otherwise have a full squad turnout. As always, welcome Gil and more of whom will be joining us shortly. So as always, this meeting's been duly scheduled and noticed as required by open meeting laws, and I'm pleased to once again call the joint meeting of the Authority and Canal Corporation to order. In terms of adopting our agenda, other than what you've already seen and had the opportunity to review, we have one item that we've added to the Governance Committee agenda that you'll hear about later in the meeting regarding the appointment of Lee Garza as Acting CEO. That aside, if I could have a motion to, unless there are other additions to the agenda, if I could have a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
So moved. Have a second. Thank you, Dennis Judge. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. As we typically do, we'll start the meeting again today in executive session. Do our best to move through those topics with pace, but if I could have a motion to conduct an executive session to discuss the financial and credit history of a particular corporation, meaning ours, please. Michael, thank you. A second. Tony, thank you. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Said we'll convene now an exec session and be back with you shortly. Thank you. Welcome back, everyone, and good morning to those who are joining us for the first time, including the extended team and staff of NIPA. Welcome everyone again this morning. I'd ask for a motion to resume the meeting in open session while acknowledging that no votes were taken during our executive session. Thank you. Have a motion. A second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we're back officially in business. Our first order of business as always is our contractors list. All of us were polled in advance, as is typically done, unless confirming no one has any other additions, deletions to all of that. That said, then hopefully everyone's had a chance to review the consent agenda items and materials that were distributed and received by all. As always, it can be called routine housekeeping. Our house is rather large, so some of those are commensurate with that, but unless there's any questions, I'd ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Have a motion to approve. A second. And second as well. Thank you very much. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The consent agenda is carried. With that, Gil, start us off, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, trustees, staff, and members of the public who are maybe streaming and listening to our, and watching our board meeting today. As I always start my report with our report card, and all arrows are pointing in the right direction for our key corporate metrics so far this year.
Do I talk about the DART rate now? Or do I save it for later?
Save it for Joe Kessler. Just, I just want to let you know, in January, the governor, in his State of the State speech, he set some nation-leading goals, energy and environmental goals, for our state. Specifically, he set a goal for us to reach 70% of our electric supply by renewable generation by 2030. That used to be 50%, and now that was increased to 70%. A vision of having a 100% carbon-free electricity in our state by 2040. Nine gigawatts, or nine megawatts, of offshore wind by 2035, off the coast of Long Island and New York City. Six gigawatts, or six megawatts, of solar distributed generation by 2025. Three gigawatts, or three megawatts, of energy storage, 3,000 megawatts, I'm sorry, of energy storage by 2030. And really, really aggressive, and again, nation-leading goal in terms of energy efficiency for our built environment. In 2014, we put our plan, NIPA 2020, we're at the tail end of that. I'm pleased to report that we've made tremendous progress. We then, in the middle of that implementation, decided that digital transportation, transformation, I'm sorry, is the catalyst to achieving our strategic initiatives, and added some moonshot initiatives that we presented to you last year in electric vehicles, in grid flexibility, storage and demand response, and offshore wind to really make a dent in our state's aggressive energy and environmental goals. So this year, we are going to map out, based on the goal set forth by Governor Cuomo, we are looking at a horizon, a long-term horizon of 2040, and a medium-term horizon of 2030, but really come back again with a NIPA strategic plan, with very specific strategic initiatives and investment plan to continue along that 2030 and 2040 path that was set forth by our governor.
It's hard to look at something that says 2040.
I know. It's a directionally, you know, carbon-free electricity in 2040. And by the way, you'll, you'll hear, hear a little bit more about a presentation of our strategic planning process from Bob Lurie and his team, and really the, what I would say, the biggest challenge of our generation, which is climate change, and, and the, the sense of urgency. And I know the board, you have always told us that we should be leading in our industry, in our space, and that's what we intend to do. We will respond to the challenge of climate change by doing. We will respond by trying things out, experimenting, and making things happen tangible and on the ground.
Well, maybe just roll back before you jump, you're moving on to the next topic.
Yep.
Roll back one more slide to the goals, the governors. I mean, give us some context here. I mean, with numbers just thrown up.
Yeah.
All the rest of it. Give us some context. I mean, the path we're on, this is, we need to make a do-nothing move here, or 40, I mean, give us some orientation.
So, right now, in New York State, we have, I believe, including our hydro, 23%, 24% renewable energy in our system. So going from 23%, 24% to 70% by 2030 is a geometric, so it is going to be an aggressive goal. Between us, our sister authority, NYSERDA, and of course, through the Public Service Commission, all the utilities here in New York, we all have to, to really up our game to reach that goal. 100% carbon-free electricity by 2040 is also a very, very aggressive goal, and may even need some breakthrough technologies for that to occur. I don't know the exact number, but we still have, no, we have hydro and we have, if you add the hydro to the existing nuclear fleet, those are all carbon-free. So I would say we're probably in the 30-plus.
Okay.
Exactly.
Okay.
Nine gigawatts of offshore wind. We don't have any offshore wind, so I know the Long Island Power Authority is putting 150-megawatt offshore wind. That will be the closest in the pipeline, so that is a lot. One area that the governor has emphasized associated with offshore wind is the creation, hopefully, of a port, infrastructure, and supply chain facilities in our state, because that will have a big economic development impact and, and job creation potential. And all the others, the six-gigawatt of DG is doubling the current goal. Storage is also doubling the current goal, and, and, you know, we don't really have a lot of storage right now, aside from NIPA's pump storage in Blenheim, Gilboa, and Lewiston as part of the Niagara power project. Energy efficiency, it's also a very, very aggressive goal. This is, you know, I would say twice the rate that we're doing right now, but it's, all of these specific goals are necessary to address the, what the science has been telling us in terms of climate change. And NIPA, we have this unique opportunity. We have always led in the past, and you have always challenged us to lead, and then that's what we intend to do. As we go through this strategic planning process, you will see that our North Star will be, you know, what can NIPA do to play and put the biggest dent and contribution to achieving this specific goals?
And I know we've done some of this, but it makes me think, I'll say, I don't want to say the easy part is to establish the goals and the targets, but how we get from here to there, other than with the proverbial hockey stick and all the rest of that. So we can continue to sharpen our focus on the kind of trajectory that's relevant for us, and how we need to, as you just said, really lead from the front and lean into the challenge as well as the opportunity, so we can continue to orient ourselves.
Yes.
2025 isn't that far away, and, you know, all the rest of that. So don't want to be lulled into a false sense of, well, we'll get there, or whatever. I mean, it's to ensure we, you know, have a way to measure and monitor the trajectory that we're on, and, you know, the relevance of it, you know, to achieve those aggressive targets.
We agree. And in fact, we had, in the initial part, or initial processes that we've already gone through in our strategic planning, that's exactly our point. You know, we need to have measurable goals. We need to have a path that we can measure our progress. You know, if we, you can't measure, you can't manage, and we need to be able to report that to you along the way. And that, that's the purpose of, and that will be embedded in our plan.
Okay. Anything else from you guys on that, before we, now back to the crisis, the continuing crisis of the moment that is Puerto Rico?
Yeah, so I just wanted to give you an update on where we are. We signed a, what's called a mutual assistance MOU with PREPA, which is the utility in Puerto Rico, and with USVI WAPA, Water and Power Authority in the U.S. Virgin Islands. And the purpose of that MOU really is primarily twofold. One, to provide technical assistance today just to stabilize their grids. Their grids are still pretty fragile, and after Irma and Maria, and there are things that need to be done just to keep it operating on a day-to-day basis. So that's one assistance that, that we're providing. The other assistance we're providing is we're now helping them think through how they should rebuild, harden, and modernize their systems going forward, and how to apply for federal funding to help them do that. If you recall, the Long Island Power Authority did the same after Superstorm Sandy. And so we are asking assistance from our friends at LIPA to help us on, on that federal requisition or application for funds, but we do have a small team in Puerto Rico and U.S. Virgin Islands, helping those utility organizations. And, and again, this is a, in my perspective, a unique opportunity for us to help them rebuild their systems that not, not only is safe, reliable, and affordable for, for their citizens, but also build their systems with, with the help of the federal government, so that they are consistent with our, with our vision of addressing climate change, and with their vision of addressing climate change. In fact, yesterday, or a day ago, the governor of Puerto Rico just declared their own goals, similar to Governor Cuomo's goals, you know, their version of their climate change response.
This is really a stabilization effort at this point.
Yeah, stabilization, and also helping them envision and apply for funds from the federal government.
Which they need to stabilize.
Absolutely. They, they need the funding to, to be able to modernize and, and transform their grids.
They're still very much at risk. You said fragile.
Absolutely.
Fragile. I mean, they're still very much at risk.
Absolutely.
But a long ways from stable there.
Well, the, the, yes, I mean, they need to really harden the grids, so that they can withstand and they can bounce back better.
Right.
From hurricanes in the future. Absolutely.
Right. And we're doing everything we can, I mean, within our purview, right?
Exactly. We're doing everything we can. I can tell you, we are the only utility with mutual aid agreements to provide technical and management assistance to, to WAPA and to PREPA. They're very, very appreciative. In fact, they had asked me to just relay to you, our board, their appreciation of, of our assistance.
I'm sure to speak for all of us. We're full, full support. I mean, doing the right thing, the right way, and part of leading from the front, just stepping up when others can't, and we can, so kudos for the continuing efforts. You, Bob, others, I know, actively involved, so, and the team, most importantly, so.
Thank you.
Well done.
That's all I have.
Any other questions for Gil? And, you know, my typical, so three months in, no surprises so far in 19, and we're, you're comfortable, confident, we're tracking where you thought we would be 90 days in?
We, we are tracking where we are, and, and we're along our path. I, I want to credit the staff for, you know, getting a good start in, in 2019.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gil. And in terms of where we are financially, Lee, you're going to run with that ball?
Absolutely. I'll give, I'll give everybody a brief update.
Okay, great. We'll determine how brief it is, Lee. But I appreciate your.
Optimism.
Yeah, exactly.
Very well.
And I don't want to diminish it either, so.
No pressure.
We'll be getting back to that, though, Lee.
All right, very well. Fair enough. I'm going to give everybody an update of what the year-to-date performance is through the end of January, as well as what we see at the end of the year. I'll address this upfront. We're tracking as expected when we set out the budget, and so let me, let me turn to January performance. January performance year-to-date is lower for the month of January by $5 million. This is very much related to a timing difference associated with some of our transmission margins and the negative variance of $5.7 million that we expect to be fully reversing over the course of the year. But from the top, we see margins down by $4.8 million. The lower margins are driven by lower-than-budgeted energy, and offset by favorable variances in hydro flows, hedge settlements, and the sale of natural gas inventory. The $5.7 million negative variance for transmission margin is related to a timing delay of revenue recognition. I'll reiterate that we expect to see that fully reverse over the course of 2019. The.
This was obviously an unanticipated timing difference?
It was, it was a foreseeable timing difference, one that we don't fully capture when we're producing the budget on developing our, our internal monthly forecasts. Non-utility margins were effectively flat. We see the variance, you'll see the variance number close as we present the full-year forecast. Operating expenses, we have a positive $4.2 million variance. This is driven by the timing of some spend on R&amp;D and projects, as well as lower depreciation that's attributable to a lower plant and service state. And lastly, net interest expense, we see a positive variance of $1.7 million, and this is primarily due to lower interest rates and lower outstanding borrowings, postponement of some debt issuances until later in the year, and a favorable mark-to-market gain on our investment portfolio. Turning to our full-year forecast, our net income for year-end is forecast to be $36.3 million, which is $15.4 million higher than budgeted. There is some variance around this number, as you can see on the bottom blue line. That variance right now, early in the year, is quite wide, and it's associated with exposure to changes in commodity prices, as well as changes in generation, primarily in hydro flows from our large, large hydro facilities. The $15.6 million positive generation variance is driven primarily by higher-than-budgeted generation at Niagara and St. Lawrence. It's a continuing theme that we see playing out throughout the year, and as a little bit of a preview, we continue to see that in some of the numbers past January, February, and into, and tomorrow.
So you're coming clean on the sandbagging right out of the, right out of the gate, or what? I mean, we missed plan by $5 million in January, and you're beating plan for the year by $15 million? I mean, come on, Lee.
This is, this is, look, I, I, I know it's.
Stretch this out a little while longer, anyway.
I know, I know. Certainly so. That, you know, those numbers, we can, we consistently, month over month, continue to see higher forecasts, and some of this is attributable to fundamental factors in the environment, such as higher, higher melt and, higher melt and runoff that's coming down through the Great Lakes. So more to come.
You referenced what you've seen since, this only is through the end, and so, given that we're at the end of March, what happened in February? What are we seeing in February? What, bring us current beyond the end of January? What do you, you know, where are we?
Right, so generally, what you would wind up seeing is a forecast net income on the order of $3 to $5 million higher for the full year, and that would be primarily driven by the generation margins, and that in and of itself deconstructed further is associated with these higher hydro flows that we're expecting for the balance of the year.
So are you suggesting, I mean, February is trending more positively than planned in March as well, so we're starting to see the pickup?
That's correct.
In Q1?
That's correct.
Okay.
So our investment in life extension at both Niagara and St. Lawrence is paying dividends in what we're seeing here.
In spades. Those are very, that was, that was a very wise investment, and very well undertaken.
We appreciate your perspective on the wisdom of the group. Thank you very much, Lee. That was a good recovery on the planning, sandbagging. All right.
Very well. Let me move on to the rest of it.
I'll have to get the sandbags off, because the water flows are high.
They, they go together.
All right.
They clearly go together.
Yeah, okay.
Transmission margins, you'll see that we're expecting year-on-net income, the variance to be nominal there, with the full reversal of, of the negative variance that we see in January. Non-utility margins and operating expenses are effectively on plan at this stage in the year. Interest expenses, we see a continuation of a positive variance there with, with the, with the postponement of debt, as well as an interest rate environment that's.
Although the best kind of cut rate, right?
Yeah.
So we're all of this.
So let me conclude it right there. What I, what I'd say in summary, and I, I think we've probably beaten this horse already, is that this year, we really see net income being higher, and that's driven by hydro flows right now, and we will continue to keep the board, the public, and the rest of the organization updated continuously.
Well, we appreciate transparency. Bob would have taken three-quarters to tell us he, you know, had sandbagged it again this year, so I appreciate you coming clean right out of the gate, Lee.
Very well.
Any other questions for Lee? All right, thanks very much. The report, I've been waiting seven years for, Joe.
Well, I'm happy to be the one to deliver it. Thank you, Chairman, trustees, members of the public and staff. On behalf of operations, we are happy to report that we are all green for our metrics, including the infamous DART rate.
Go give me five on that, buddy. Five. Got a green on the DART rate.
Credit to the staff. We've been really paying attention to it, and we're really proud to report that this month. And all the other measures, we're ahead. You will see, we adjusted the generator market readiness target based on the BG outage that's underway right now for the Unit 1 failure that we had last year, and so that target's a little bit adjusted for that, and we, we are going to hit that target of getting that back in service for the summer capacity period.
If it wasn't January, I think everybody's out for, out for March Madness or something.
That's right, that's right. So, good, good news on all fronts there. We do have a couple items to bring to the board for some of our initiatives. The first being in support of our digitization and the Moses Zanderonic work. So today, the trustees are asked to approve two five-year on-call contracts for the supply and delivery of optical ground wire cable and association, associated hardware in the aggregated amount of $15.2 million to AFL Telecommunications LLC and MVA Power Incorporated. This equipment will support the Communications Backbone Program that we've briefed previously, and the Moses Zanderonic Smart Path Reliability Project. These on-call contracts will allow flexibility between suppliers, and we will evaluate lead times and pricing at the time of purchase to meet the schedule on both projects.
If you give us the next one, we can approve them both.
Yeah.
So the Niagara headgates are, are due for refurbishment. These are key components to stop the water when we do maintenance, and the stoplogs are actually in front of them to help us do maintenance on the headgate should we need to do that. So the Niagara Robert Moses upper headgate and stoplog rail slot refurbishment project includes the removal of zebra mussels and debris within the slots, removal and refurbishment of the rails and associated parts, cleaning and recoding of the exposed steel surfaces and concrete repairs as necessary to ensure reliable operation of the headgates and stoplogs to de-water the operating units. The headgate refurbishment project started in 2011. At the date, 15 slots were complete. The stoplog refurbishment project started in 2018, and to date, one slot is completed. These projects have now been combined to realize efficiencies in execution and outage planning. The remaining slots will be refurbished in a phased approach based on the availability, available outages, and overall targeted completion of 2027. Interim approval was received in February to issue a notice to proceed, but today, the trustees are asked for the approval of the nine-year construction contract award to BVR Construction Incorporated in the amount of $16.1 million for this project. And happy to answer any questions on those.
These, both of these, obviously, were in the materials that were presented. We reviewed. Any questions for Joe? Otherwise, I'd ask for, I'll say, a couple motions. Motion, motion to approve the two. Motion, motion. Second, second. Second, second from Dennis. Any other questions? Otherwise, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Both motions approved. Karen, you got that?
I got that.
Okay, ready to go. Thanks. All right.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Joe. Appreciate it. Sarah?
All right, good morning.
You don't have all greens. You got the Christmas tree thing wrong on this earlier show.
I know, well, I mean, since you weren't going to be able to beat up on Joe, I thought, you know, my turn. All right, so despite some more severe cold snaps over the course of the winter, the winter actually was seven degrees milder than last year, and as a result of that, we didn't have to depend on oil-generated fossil fuel for.
That's why the water's running, where there's more water running, right?
Right, and so, as you know, natural gas normally sets the electricity prices. When there's extreme cold, oil sets the electricity prices, because gas is reserved for home heating, and as a result of that, you see a reflection in the variances from the budget that was set in Q4 of 2018, when the forwards were anticipating greater oil generation. The electricity prices and the fuel prices are reflective of that, with about $10 lower on the electric prices and five on the fuel. And while we do gain a slightly more of a spark spread on our fossil generation, since we're predominantly hydro and the prices are depressed, even though we have about .3 terawatt-hours higher hydro generation, that is resulting in multiplying, you know, P times Q, it's resulting in a slightly lower merchant gross margin.
I mean, help me a little, educate me. So I'm a. So I'm assuming the planning process was recent enough that that kind of miss would be unlikely? So is it, there's more volatility than I appreciate inherently in the market?
Yes.
And it's not as much of a quote-unquote miss as it appears? Talk to us a little bit.
Yeah, there is a lot more volatility in the market. You saw that last year as well, right? Because if you look back to the summer of 2018, right, we had much higher electricity prices than were anticipated due to the severity of the heat, and you saw that was offsetting a much lower hydro flows because we were trying to break ice in the beginning of the year. So when we set the budget, we're picking a snapshot in time of the forwards that are available at that point, and at that point, there was an anticipation of greater oil because of the anticipated kind of weather in the market. But that's the very reason that we have a hedging program, right?
Say, link that back to our hedging discussion earlier.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, so that's the thing, when we set the budget, we set an expected value, and we set risk parameters around that, and then we work towards taking advantage of the market when we can in order to reduce the potential risk to that expected value and meeting our budget. So we are continually transacting on hedges when we see them in order to meet the budget for the year.
Okay.
But we're also undertaking a forecasting project to review all of our forecasting processes and look to adopt best-in-class with the new technology that's out there as well.
All right, helpful. So, Maggie, it looks like you're going to add anything to that, or no?
No, I think Sarah is right. I was just going to talk about the forecasting project. So the variability that you see partly is because of, you know, how we forecast. So we're trying to tighten that process as well, so, and then the market, I talked about how the risk is moving from this long-term market, the volatility we see increasing in the short-term market.
Right. Particularly as you have new intermittent resources coming in, right? The volatility intra-day is higher.
All right, sorry, go ahead. Thanks.
Then on economic development, you know, our goal every year is to maximize the allocation of the hydroelectric power that we have to provide to customers that would like to enter New York or expand their business operations here. We're 83% allocated for Recharge New York. It's very difficult to set targets on capital commitments and jobs because, in the end, a decision for an organization to either enter New York or expand is multifaceted and not solely based on power production. But as you know, with the Alcoa transaction that's before you for approval, NIPA was a very strong contributing factor to their ability to maintain operations because the aluminum smelter's predominant cost is energy. And so in that, we were very successful in ensuring jobs are being maintained in the North Country and the livelihoods that are associated with that. On the energy efficiency, again, we have a capital portfolio of projects over $200 million annually, and in that, the customer investments are reflective of those capital investments for the various energy efficiency projects we have. We're slightly ahead of schedule on that, and the nonutility revenues, which essentially are aligned with the timing of our capital investments, are also then slightly ahead. There's also timing, again, on the operating expenses, but it's not a significant variance. But as you know, I'm very focused on looking at our costs this year in clean energy solutions more broadly, and focusing strongly on cost containment in order to meet our budget. And that's really, that's really all I have, but we're well on our way to delivering on the objectives that we have for the year on behalf of the state.
Anya, at that last point, we haven't had a chance to talk about it, but talk a little bit more about, yeah, the opportunity to achieve the kind of improvements that we find ourselves, other than where we wanted to be or anticipated, the opportunity to turn that around. Can you talk just for a couple minutes about what you're doing there and what you've seen now that you've been six months, whatever it is now?
Totally.
How many months is it?
Seven.
Seven, okay. So just talk a little bit more about the turnaround that you foresee and anticipate.
Sure. Well, I mean, our energy efficiency program has been around for, you know, a couple of decades, and we are, have a very strong customer base for that in terms of all of our governmental customers. We do a lot of deep energy retrofits, and that really is supporting meeting the aggressive and ambitious goals that the governor continues to set for us in terms of greenhouse gas reductions and overall energy efficiency. Where we have been focused in the last couple of years is really expanding the services that we're providing beyond the boiler retrofits and HVAC upgrades to the new cleaner technology solutions, be that digital, be it distributed solar and storage. And that takes time to develop in terms of getting the offerings into a format and a framework that is understood by our customers. There's a lot of actually education that needs to be moved forward there in order for our customers who have to go to the controller's office, et cetera, in order to get approval to go forward with them. But we've seen, as you might have seen in the press in the last couple of days, you know, the Javits Center is going forward with a significant amount of distributed solar on the center, and I think that the work that we've been doing, both in terms of developing the services, as well as educating our customers and tweaking the product to the point where they're able to kind of buy and sign up for it. So I anticipate that we're going to see that part of the business accelerate in growth where it has been slower to date. And then on, that's on the revenue side, right? And on the cost side, you can always cut costs, right? And so, again, just with a focused effort at looking on a monthly basis at our O&amp;M and our GNA, and looking at ways that we can save and setting targets around that, that's where I'm looking to achieve.
Better align your costs with your revenue opportunities.
Right, exactly.
Right size and that. Okay, well, more to come then.
Okay, thanks.
All right, Sarah, Alcoa, along with other recharge initiatives, how do we want to, do we want to start with Alcoa? Do we want to?
Yeah, I think we should start with Alcoa, and then we'll do the balance.
I think so, too, it's more than notable, so.
Yep, so if, Mr. Chairman, if I could just help set the table, about three years, three months ago, if you recall, Alcoa was really on the verge of shutting down their operations completely in Messina in the North Country. And the state, Governor's Office, ESD, and NIPA pulled together and created a plan to save Alcoa and to keep it a going concern, and give it an opportunity to be a going concern and preserve the jobs and the associated economic activity in northern New York. That contract is now going to expire by the end of this month, and so we've been in, I'm happy to report that their prospects now are much better than three years and three months ago, and their future seems to be a lot brighter than three years and three months ago. And with that, we were able to agree on a contract that we would like for you to review and approve today, a new agreement for Alcoa. And I'm going to ask Bob Lurie, our CFO, who led the negotiations, along with Keith Hayes and others, to give a little bit more information about that new proposed agreement.
Great, thank you. So just to pick up where Gil left off in terms of comparing where we are now to what we did back in 2015, this deal is in many ways a continuation of that deal, so I think it's important that we kind of go back and revisit what that was and then how this takes off from there. So at the time, in 2015, as Gil said, the plant was under severe financial distress. There was a lot of depression of prices on the world aluminum market that was causing severe financial pressure on the, and the jobs at the plant were really at risk. As a result, the state came up with a package of incentives for Alcoa to try to help the plant kind of return to profitability and to support the maintenance of jobs at the plant. There were, at the time, about 600 or so jobs at the plant between Alcoa and the portion of the business that ended up getting spun off into what is now Arconic. And what we did was not only provide them with some upfront assistance through the Empire State Development, but NIPA did our part by creating a very unique pricing structure for the power for the Alcoa plant in Messina. And that pricing structure was designed to essentially create somewhat of a partnership between NIPA and Alcoa at the plant, in which we agreed to vary our power prices to the plant, to the company, along as aluminum prices went up and down in both the world market and the U.S. market. The reason we did that was really to say, okay, when the plant is struggling, then we agree to provide you with a discount to try to help stabilize the economics. And when the plant is successful and is doing better, we want to share in that success and essentially make back some of that assistance that we've provided you when times are tough. That financial structure, I'm happy to say, has been extremely successful, and I believe has really helped stabilize the financial situation, the economics at the plant, and provided a more stable platform for the maintenance of jobs at that plant in the future. That's not to say that, you know, protects, protects it against everything that could occur, but it's a much more stable situation.
Accomplished the intended objectives three and a half, four years ago.
Exactly. So we've really decided to try to just maintain that same structure and build on that foundation that we created back in 2015 with this deal. So that was a three-and-a-half-year deal. We've essentially agreed to extend this same structure now for an additional seven years, and because it varies with the underlying economic factors that drive that plant's profitability, this deal, we think, can maintain the test of time for that length of time going forward. It contains commitments on the part of Alcoa to maintain 450 jobs at the plant. There are the typical compliance provisions in the contract that we have with all of our other economic development customers. Keith can go into some more detail on that. But it allows us to continue in that partnership that we've had with the plant in the past, and so we're very happy about that, and our ability to, as Gil said, to maintain the employees' jobs in a place and at a time where it would otherwise be very difficult to replace those jobs.
Well, and you use the word "unique." I mean, as we've talked about this, I mean, I well remember, three and a half years ago, the, you know, very, you know, pointed dialogue and discussion, as we've talked about it periodically since. I mean, it really is a unique transaction for us, correct?
That's right. It is unique, and so we-
Necessarily so, given the severity of the circumstance and the significance of the need to the North Country.
The significance of the number of jobs to that community and the need to recognize what is some, you know, fairly volatile underlying factors that drive the economics of that plant. And, you know, in the first year, year and a half of the deal, it was, you know, it was really necessary to provide some pretty steep discounts to the company. Since that time, though-
Well, it was more than a steep discount, we were subsidizing, right? So, yeah.
Yes. But, you know, the overall economics have flipped around, the company's doing better, prices have gone up, and now, looking in retrospect, that deal is very similar economics to those at any other economic development.
Working for us as well as them, no?
Yeah, this is really a win-win-win, and I'm proud of the team. I'm proud of NIPA that we're able to make a difference there. It's a win for Alcoa, but certainly a win for the state, the North Country, and a win for NIPA. So it's a, it's a very good deal all around.
Okay, great. Keith, you want to talk to that and?
Sure. Hopefully, I could round it out and bring it home, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, okay, great.
I'll give you a little more background.
Second base, all right, you know, you can get there.
Already towards third.
Okay, good, I like it.
So we're asking the trustees to approve an extension of 240 megawatts of preservation power to now known as Alcoa USA Corp., whose current contract expires on March 31, 2019. So a little more background, established in 1902, Alcoa operates the longest continually operating smelter in the world, located at their west plant in Messina, New York. In exchange for the allocation of preservation power under the seven-year term, as Bob mentioned, Alcoa will maintain its operations in Messina, retain at least 450 jobs, and make $14 million in capital investment commitments. For clarification purposes, in November of 2016, Alcoa, again, now known as Alcoa USA Corp., split into two independent publicly traded companies, including a downstream business called Arconic, who specializes in lightweight metals engineering and manufacturing. Arconic was on the same contract as Alcoa and now has a separate contract, which you approved at your December 2008 trustee meeting, securing an additional 145 jobs in exchange for five megawatts of preservation power, and that is a 10-year contract term. The contract now incorporates a more developed approach by the authority to administering the preservation power program in a manner that is consistent with the state energy plan and the clean energy standard. Consistent with our other economic development contracts, as Bob mentioned, provisions now exist for the partial or complete withdrawal of an allocation if Alcoa fails to maintain mutually agreed upon commitments relating to, among other things, employment, power utilization, and capital investment commitments. This item requests that the trustees authorize a public hearing on the proposed contract for Alcoa. This item, again, is submitted for your approval. I'd be happy to take any questions.
So while probably still unique within our sphere, it's moved much closer to, we're within the realm of norm, right? The normal deals that we've done, I mean, we've said no to others where deals don't make sense for all of us. This deal, while challenging in the past, less so today for the benefit of all, I mean, we've moved more toward the range of normal for us.
Absolutely, and very much consistent with our other economic development contracts, as I mentioned. So those provisions are consistent at this point.
And Judge, obviously, this is home turf for you. You want to weigh in a bit on what you see, literally?
Sure, Mr. Chairman, you know, living in the community, I have firsthand opportunity to observe the effect of the power authorities' intervention in this keeping of jobs in the St. Lawrence County area. I go back to the events taking place at the plant. Governor Patterson was there, and then Governor Cuomo, and so it expands over about four governorships that this support has been there. But I also see every day people that go into work seven days a week, 24 hours a day at this plant, and it provides them with an opportunity, if they're in their midlife, as far as their work life is concerned, an opportunity to see things through, to educate their children, to buy a house, to buy a car, and all of those things. Alcoa, USA, and Arconic are essentially the biggest employer north of the thruway line from east to west in the state of New York, and, you know, this affords an opportunity going forward for the communities to have some time to look for diversification of the economy in that area, and it goes a long way in making it not a crash job, but something that they can work at with some due diligence to get the economy changed in the area. So as Gil said, it's a win-win-win situation, and I commend the people at the authority for doing so.
And playing off that for a minute, Keith, just for the record, refresh all of us in terms of the efforts to pivot and invest in and help underwrite a more diversified economy. Want to just editorialize for a couple minutes? I know it comes up here, but just tie together with the judge said here in terms of not just- just Alcoa, but to focus on the broader base of economic support there.
Yeah. With respect to the North Country, our economic development programs are having a profound impact. And latest numbers show jobs created and retained in excess of 10,000 and over a half a billion dollars in capital investment commitments. So we're absolutely making an impact on the North Country, consistent with what we're trying to do here today.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just interject real quick. This is a good deal for NIPA. It's also a good deal for the company. I think it's important to note that, you know, we feel it's very reasonable pricing when compared to the average pricing that Alcoa could get by going out in the market when looked at throughout the year. You know, during the wintertime, prices tend to spike up, so their discount is greater. In other times of the year, it might actually be flipped around the other way, and the prices they get from us are actually a little higher than what they would get in the market if they were at the market. Overall, this is very comparable to what we would provide other companies, and I think represents a good deal for all sides.
Well, it's always great when the intended outcome, wanted outcome, hoped-for outcome has been achieved. Those of us that were involved three and a half, four years ago, remember it was a very challenging circumstance. Talked to Howard Zemsky way too many times throughout that process, and while always happy to talk to Howard, those were other than ideal circumstances for all of us. So kudos to all of you for, I'll say, the courage to do the right thing three and a half, four years ago. It's great to hear firsthand the acknowledgement and appreciation that's there. Happy to have obtained the periodic updates to say the story is trending in the right direction, and we knew we were starting at the bottom, and it's great to know that we've gotten to a much more stable and appropriate position. So well done, team, and kudos to NIPA. I think another great example of leading from the front and leaning in where relevant. So well done, one and all. Anything else from anybody on Alcoa? Otherwise, I'd ask for a motion to proudly support. Judge, appropriately so. Second, Dennis, unless any other discussions, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Great job. And whoever else was involved, just in the lawyers, probably got to take some credit, Brian. Whatever, so.
They did a great job.
Lee must have been working on it because he was under plan, so I'm sure he was spending time on this. Whatever, okay.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hopefully, more good news. As recommended by the Economic Development Power Allocation Board on March 4, 2019, the trustees are requested to approve 16.8 megawatts of recharge New York power to the following: four large business retention allocations totaling 12 megawatts, three large business expansion allocations totaling .7 megawatts, 18 small business and not-for-profit based allocations totaling 3.6 megawatts, and two large business retention modifications totaling approximately a half a megawatt. These allocations would collectively support the retention and creation of over 7,800 jobs and $1.4 billion of capital investment commitments. The balance of available recharge New York power to award is approximately 154 megawatts, which 50% or 77 megawatts is hydropower. One way to replenish the program is through compliance action, which was brought to you at previous meetings. So there are 25 allocations and two modifications that will be distributed to 23 customers throughout the-- I would like to highlight, as I usually do, one business in particular. It's the Icon Medical Research Facility at Mount Sinai in New York City. In exchange for 56 kilowatts, they are going to create 202 new jobs and make capital investment commitments of $30 million. So a significant impact. This item is submitted for your approval. I'd be happy to take any questions.
So, you know, in the materials, unless anybody's got any questions, they asked for a motion to approve.
Some of them.
There's a second in there for you, Karen. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried.
Okay. So the next item, the trustees are requested to approve 72 recharge New York power conditional contract extensions for the sale of 101.8 megawatts of recharge New York power to existing customers. I've brought items to you in the past meetings. This is, we're in the extension process after the first five years of the program. These 72 RNY existing allocations represent those companies who enrolled in the program in year one, that was 2012, and submitted extension applications that have been reviewed and evaluated by NIPA's staff. The trustees are also requested to approve modifications to 16 recharge New York extension allocations requiring adjustments. In most cases, these adjustments are due to companies committing to reduced employment levels for the extension, but that also results in reduced allocation amounts to those businesses. These contract extensions are conditioned upon compliance with the existing contract. The extended term of these contracts will commence on July 1 of this year for those customers that began RNY upon the program's inception date again in July 1, 2012. The 72 extensions collectively support over 44,000 jobs and $3.3 billion in capital investment commitments. The extension contract will include compliance provisions that allow the authority to reduce RNY power allocations for those customers failing to meet their contractual commitments. The extension contract also incorporates a more developed approach by the authority to administer the RNY program in a manner that is consistent with the state energy plan and clean energy standard. Again, this item is submitted for your approval, and I'd be happy to take any of your questions.
The 16 modifications, that's outside of the Oscar audit program and other adjustments we've done in the past. This is more by mutual negotiation as opposed to compliance audit?
Right. So when they reapply for the extension, they're committing to lesser jobs and--
Acknowledgements proactive on their part rather than us chasing.
Exactly. Not the result of an audit finding.
Okay. All right. Any questions for Keith on any of that? Otherwise, a motion to approve, please. Anne, thank you. Second, Judge, thank you. Any other discussion? Otherwise, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Carried.
Okay. So this next item requests the trustees to approve a 200-kilowatt allocation of replacement power to Time Release Sciences, Inc., also known as TRS, which is planning to double the size of its production facility with a 96,000-square-foot addition in the city of Buffalo. The allocation would support the creation of 12 new jobs above their current job commitment of 96 and a capital investment commitment of at least $13.5 million. TRS, which currently has three allocations of NIPA power, all in compliance, will expand its operations by adding six new lines to increase production of Procter &amp; Gamble's Magic Eraser and will allow for the production of new products. Public hearing is not needed for the new allocation, and again, this item is submitted for your approval. I'd be happy to take any questions. We love the Magic Eraser.
Yeah, great.
My wife loves it.
Great to see.
It's a great product.
Yes, it is.
Clean shoes, clean walls.
Everything.
It's like duct tape.
Yes, I know.
Everything.
I'm a big fan.
I don't really make a mess, so I'm not that-- Okay, Anne's moved it. We have a second. We have a second. Any other discussion of the Magic Eraser and/or this particular item? Otherwise, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Let the Magic Erasers come. All right.
All right. Moving right along here. The trustees are requested to approve an extension to September 1, 2040, to the term of service for existing Niagara hydropower allocations to 51 municipal electric utility and rural electric cooperative customers, and to authorize a public hearing on the proposed contract for the sale of the allocations for the extended term. Pursuant to federal law, the Niagara Redevelopment Act and the Public Authorities Law, Section 1005, the authority sells 764.8 megawatts of firm hydropower to the Muni and Co-op customers under a contract that is set to expire on September 1, 2025. In addition, these customers purchase 3.6 megawatts of firm peaking power under the same contracts for a total of 768.4 megawatts of hydropower, which is sold at the authority's cost base, or what we call preference power rates. The authority and the customers negotiated terms and conditions for a long-term extension of this critically important low-cost hydropower, which makes up a majority of the Muni and Co-op electric systems' power supply to their residential, commercial, and industrial consumers. Some pertinent issues agreed to and incorporated in the proposed contract are as follows. The Muni and Coops agreed to take actions to support the goals of the state energy plan and the clean energy standard. They also agreed to expand and dedicate funds to energy efficiency and energy conservation-related programs, projects, and policies. The contract creates several joint customer NIPA implementation task forces to review and track projects funded through this mechanism focusing on rev-like technologies, resiliency, technology, and innovation that are all consistent with the state energy plan and the clean energy standard. This item also requests the trustees to authorize a public hearing on the proposed contracts. Again, this item is submitted for your approval. I'd be happy to take any of your questions.
Just for informational purposes, Mr. Chairman, the Niagara Redevelopment Act, which most of this power is being allocated under, dictated that these municipals get preference power, and the Power Authority over the years has worked with them to bring them into the energy programs that we've been involved in, and they've been receptive to that.
Very receptive.
So, you know, they've been a good customer over the years, and I would move the resolution on this subject.
Appreciate the commentary. Have a motion? Have a second?
Second.
Second. Thank you very much. Any other discussion or questions? Otherwise, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Duly noted. Thank you very much, Keith.
Okay. The last item requests the trustees to approve an award of Western New York Economic Development or Proceeds Funds. On February 4, 2019, the Western New York Proceeds Board recommended that one business, Hauptman Woodward Medical Research Institute, also known as HWI, be awarded fund benefits totaling $1 million. The related project which you received in your board books is tied to approximately $5 million in project investment. HWI seeks to expand establishing a center for therapeutic interactions that will offer cryogenic electron microscopy-based research, also known as CryoM. Whereas normal electron microscopy damages a specimen due to the high-energy electron beams, this allows for a resistance of about 30 to 300 times, allowing for the determination of biomolecular structures at nearatomic resolution. So in layman's terms, this is really cool stuff. It's really cool stuff. That's my conversion. The trustees are asked to approve this recommendation. To date, about $36.9 million in fund benefit awards has been approved, and there's currently about $5 million available, of which approximately $1.4 million is dedicated to energy-related projects. Again, this item is submitted for your approval. I'd be happy to take any questions.
My quick editorial, I mean, Hauptman Woodward, yeah, mind-boggling work, but world-class, and incredibly proud that they're based in Buffalo and New York. So great to see their continued great work, being further enabled by our support. So I'd ask for a motion. Michael, second. Anne, thank you very much. This is another session. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Terrific. Keith, well done. Kudos again on all of that, Alcoa in particular. Yep, good work. All right, thanks very much. Gil, Bob, one more time, well done with Alcoa. Victory lap, well earned and deserved. Okay. Next up, Bob's already up and out, so-- Climate change.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and trustees.
Water is running further and faster.
Hey, that, in some ways, that's a good thing.
Our tide is rising.
Well, Gil has already set the stage for this presentation, Mr. Chairman, by talking about how we are embarking on a new strategic planning effort. We've really tried to anchor that effort in looking at the question of why, why we are embarking on this plan and really grounded that in the, what we think is the major challenge of our generation, which is the challenge of climate change. And, you know, that's a challenge for our generation, but is really a challenge for the next generation. You're going to be hearing during this presentation from some of the members of NIPA's next generation, who are very well-versed in this issue and speak eloquently on this matter. And as we begin this process, we asked ourselves not just, you know, why do we do strategic planning? Why are we anchoring it in climate change? But also, why now? I think we're seeing some important changes that have taken place even over the last few months in the imperative around this issue. We've certainly seen the governor come out and propose in his State of the State message our own Green New Deal for the state of New York that is extremely ambitious. Gil went through in his presentation the targets and metrics that we're trying to hit as a state and that we are all committed to hitting. They're very challenging, and one of the roles NIPA can play is to figure out how do we actually achieve that and do that in a way that's practical, it's reliable, it's affordable, and is in the economic best interests of the state. And the governor's really kind of set the goals for us there. But also, we're also seeing at the same time, a lot of corporate America start to propose and require that for their own operations, that they want to have clean energy serving their facilities, and that the environmental impacts of their operations be greatly lessened and become more sustainable. And they, in turn, are requiring from their providers of services, electric services and others, that we help them achieve those goals. So as a business imperative for NIPA and the other partners that we do business with, we need to respond to that challenge. And another thing that's happening now over the last several months, as you've read in the newspapers, is that, you know, the American people are seeing the effects of climate change now and are really demanding that we in the public sector begin to address that. In fact, there was an article just this morning in the Washington Post that pointed out some of the impacts that that change in opinion is having, even in Washington. It notes that one Republican senator, Lamar Alexander of Tennessee, is calling for a, quote, "new Manhattan project for clean energy." Another Democratic representative, Paul Tonko of New York, is outlining a framework for climate legislation that is, quote, "doable." And a third legislator, a third lawmaker, Matt Getz from Florida, a Republican, is drafting his own resolution dubbed the, quote, "Green Real Deal." So this flurry of proposals comes as polling shows that Americans increasingly recognize the conspicuous effects of climate change in their own backyards after being battered by a series of intense wildfires and hurricanes in recent years. Quote, "We can't try and fail at this effort," Tonko said in an interview on Monday. "We have to get this right." And I think that's what NIPA feels as well. We have to get this right, and we have to do this in a way that really captures the benefits of the response to climate change in terms of the economic job creation that can result, but also the environmental improvement that can result, and that this is the major imperative for our generation. So we're in the process of what's probably going to be a six-month process towards creating our 2030 strategic plan. It began back in February and early March. We had our first off-site workshop, really talking about this question of why and our purpose and aligning our mission with this challenge. And then what we intend to do is, in our May meeting, when we come back to you at that next board meeting, to tell you exactly what the strategies are that we want to employ to prioritize our efforts in this area and really make a major impact in New York State's ability to achieve those goals that the governor laid out. That'll involve some stakeholder engagement with our employees, but also with outside stakeholders, customers, partners, et cetera, around the state. So we'll be bringing that back to you at our May meeting. So without further ado, I'd like to call on my colleagues Carly and Matt to present to you what the imperative is around this issue and how we're looking at this problem. Matt, Carly?
Thank you, Bob. Good morning, trustees. My name is Matt Liktash. I'm an analyst at the New York Electric Vehicle Program, and I love crunching numbers. But that's not why I came to NIPA. I came to NIPA because I know that the work I do each and every day has a-- I came to NIPA because I know that the work I do each and every day has a positive impact on an issue near and dear to my heart, climate change. I'm a third-generation Brooklynite and climate change threatens the place where I grew up. So, while the policy landscape and market trends are obviously important reasons behind our 2030 strategy, the underpinning is climate change. We know that greenhouse gas emissions are warming the planet and that the actions we take in the next several years will be critical to avoid the worst impacts of climate change. So, what are the lower and upper bounds of the possible warming futures that we can expect? Starting with the three-degree scenario, you see in the middle, yellow bar. This scenario unfolds if you add up the impact of all existing policies to reduce carbon, things like vehicle fuel efficiency standards, energy efficiency standards. The top scenario in red, the four-degree scenario, that would unfold if our climate, our carbon reduction policies were not as effective and we kept on burning through carbon at quick rates. The third possible scenario you see on the bottom in green, the low-warming or that two-degree or below path. That would require sustained and consistent year-over-year greenhouse gas reduction. So, the critical point to notice on this chart is 2020. That is a critical juncture that you see all three of these paths diverge. And what we do after 2020 will determine whether we go down a high-warming pathway or a low-warming pathway. So, what is the difference between the high-warming pathway and the low-warming pathway? What are the actual real-world implications of these scenarios? Well, it turns out the difference is actually pretty massive. So, to take one example, let's move up north and look at the Arctic. Today, the Arctic is never ice-free in the summer. There's always some sea ice there. However, under a high-warming pathway, the Arctic in the summer, an ice-free Arctic in the summer becomes the new normal by the end of the century. But in a low-warming scenario, an ice-free Arctic summer is the exception to the rule. But bringing it back to New York, I wanted to talk a little bit about Hurricane Sandy and the devastating impact that it had. Sandy truly was a freak massive storm, a one-in-1,000-year storm event. It caused record 14 feet of storm surge at New York City's Battery Park. And what does climate change have to do with the likelihood of future hurricane Sandys happening? Well, it turns out the American Meteorological Society looked at this very question and they found that under a high-warming scenario, because of higher sea levels and stronger storms pushing those higher sea levels onto land, the likelihood by the end of the century of another hurricane Sandy is one in two every other year by the end of the century if we go down a high emissions world. However, if we do reduce emissions, we can slash that risk to one every 200 years. So, one every two, one every 200, 100 Sandys every 200 years or one. So, it's a pretty clear dichotomy here. And this dichotomy exists for NIPA's assets and for our customers' assets as well. So, looking at this aerial view of Astoria Queens, we can see NIPA Zeltman Power Plant in the lower right-hand corner and we can see a key customer asset as well, the Ward's Island Wastewater Treatment Plant up at the top of the picture. In a low-warming world, these assets stay above water. They're not inundated at all. However, in a high-warming world, these assets become submerged. And it's not just these assets as well. This is just one example. JFK, LaGuardia, Coney Island, Fire Island, Key MTA subway tunnels, all of these assets sit at the critical juncture where they're above water in a low-warming world, but submerged in a high-warming world. So, what do we do about it? How can we ensure that we actually go down this low-emissions pathway and ensure that we preserve the assets that make New York, New York? I'd like to turn it over now to my colleague Carly Hume to tell you a little bit more about actions we can take.
Hi, trustees. So, I'm Carly Hume. I joined NIPA about a year and a half ago and like Matt, this hasn't been a short journey for me. All the way back in high school, I decided I wanted a mission-based career. In college, I decided that mission would be climate change and I can't think of any place I could have more impact than NIPA. And as I joked with some people earlier, I know that sounds like I'm interviewing for a job, but I already work here, so you can trust me that this is where I feel I can have the most impact. So, we're going to start by talking about the solutions to climate change. So, broadly, we talk in two different categories. We talk about adaptation and mitigation. Adaptation prepares us to manage the effects of climate change and mitigation aims to prevent climate change altogether. So, adaptation would look like storm barriers or increased grade hardening, but like prevention is the best medicine, mitigation is the best solution to climate change. And those are solutions like investing in renewable energy and decreasing our carbon footprint. And at this point, we're likely to need a mix of both to make sure that we have a safe world for future generations. So, we wanted to spend a little bit of time talking about mitigation and the individual, mitigation at the most individual level. So, this is a list of actions you probably already take, undertake at home because they save energy and they save money. So, turning off the lights, doing full loads of laundry, these are all things that are likely simple switches, ones you likely have already done at home. But as many as the, however many solutions we have that are easy to undertake, there are also ones that we likely would not undertake. These are ones that I personally would not undertake. I'm not, I'm not willing to give up my car because I live in a suburb and it's the only way I get around. I don't think I'm willing to give up traveling by airplane and never going on another vacation. Similarly, I'm not willing to give up air conditioning or eating meat. So, we see both sides of the spectrum here and as much as we may be willing to make some considerations and not others, we can expect that from everyone across the planet. But there's a whole bunch of stuff in the middle. So, this is where the average American's carbon emissions comes from and you can see that it's pretty split, stuff you buy, transportation, home heating and cooling. But across the board, in every category, there's stuff that we can all do that are medium-strength changes. So, these are ones that are probably pretty intuitive here. So, the first is meatless Mondays, maybe switching to a hybrid or an EV car. Personally, the one in the upper right, which is not to let anyone else touch the thermostat, is a popular one in my household. But these are all things that we can do as individuals to mitigate our impact on climate change. But Matt already talked about the extent of the challenge ahead of us and our individual actions will likely not be enough. So, how do we amplify the impact that we can have in mitigating and adapting to climate change? So, the first is yourself. We just talked a little bit about those solutions. The second is who you talk to. Who's in your community? Who are your family members? Who are your friends? The biggest indicator of whether or not someone is going to go solar is whether or not they know someone who already has. The third is what you buy. We're already starting to see this in advanced branding from brands like Patagonia or Tesla or the carpet company Interface where they're asking consumers and consumers are asking them to make more intentional choices in how they produce. And we're leveraging our buying power to demonstrate to customer, to companies how we like them to behave. And the third, the last is where you work. So, we spend at least a third of our time every day or every workday here. So, where we work can have a strong impact on our carbon emissions and the carbon emissions of the country. And that, as I said, is why I came to NIPA. So, NIPA has a bunch of competitive advantages in this space and I'm just going to talk on a, touch on a few of them today. So, the first is our low cost of capital. We also have a longer-term investment horizon, which means that we can take, undertake investments that other companies, that other organizations can't or won't. We already have a running start. All 80% of our electrons are already carbon-free. We have a trusted network of stakeholders and shareholders and friends. And like, and also we have 1,600 employees who are dedicated and who are excited about making these changes. So, this is what we already have in our pocket and the challenge is great, but it's also one that we're gearing up to solve. So, in summary, the climate is getting warmer. Its consequences are likely to be severe and unpredictable. The severity will depend on our near-term path and near-term decisions. But at home, in our communities, and particularly as leaders at NIPA, we can shape our future path and limit climate change. So, with that, we'd be happy to take any questions that you have.
Terrific presentation, both of you, and kudos for your leadership and passion on the issue. It's tremendous. Really, really is.
Our next generation of leaders right here at NIPA.
Yeah, no, it's tremendous. Help me a little bit, how can we create the, well, what's your sense of the sense of urgency and the imperative that exists today? When you talk about 2,100, it's impossible for me to get my head around 2,100. I mean, I can, but, so how do you, where do you think that sense of urgency? Obviously, it's written about, as Bob said, you know, on a daily basis, but the real commitment to driving change and doing things differently and all the rest of that. What's your read of it from your seat? You know, back to the earlier discussion with Gil, so we established aggressive goals, so where are we? So, what's our baseline today? Give us your read of that.
Sure thing. So, in looking at our decarbonization challenge, first, we have to look at where the carbon is. So, in New York, 40% of our emissions are in transportation. So, to begin to tackle that decarbonization of the transportation sector, we have to start, you know, with some key areas where we feel like there are key market barriers that are impeding the progress of decarbonization. So, I work on the Evolve New York program. So, on a day-to-day basis, I'm sort of in the weeds on this. So, a lot of the things that we're doing in the Evolve New York program is really making it easier to own and drive an electric vehicle across New York State. We're building charging stations to make all New Yorkers able to take long road trips in an EV. So, unlocking those key market barriers and getting over those key pain points in the near term are things where NIPA can really take a lead and make an outsized impact.
And, sorry, and to build on that, you know, as Bob said, we're already, Americans are already starting to see the effects of climate change. So, we're starting to see some passion build up, but you need to not only have the challenge presented, but you also have to have some of the solutions offered. And because if we have a problem without offering any solutions, no one will know where to go and will feel hopeless. But as Matt said, we already are starting to see entrance into the solutions that we can have, whether it's fuel switching for your building heating source or switching to an EV. So, in addition to activating and educating everyone on the challenges that are ahead, we also have to be ready to provide information on the solutions that are coming down the pipeline because likely, most people are not going to be willing to give up their quality of life in order to accomplish these goals. We need to do both simultaneously.
How you redefine quality of life? I mean, you're just playing off your New York State thing. I mean, obviously, the Ubers and the Lifts make it even easier and create more congestion. So, what's the response to that? Well, let's tax, you know, the cars. I mean, it all seems counterproductive as opposed to, we're starting, we're just iteratively progressing versus accepting and embracing what the objective and outcome should be and how do we better get there? So, yeah, how you mobilize and create that sense of shared passion and commitment that you and others have to affect the broader.
And we have to, we have to spread it, Mr. Chairman. I mean, it's fine, it's very important for New York State to achieve our goals for the climate, but, you know, as I like to say, even if we achieve all of our goals, Manhattan is still going to flood, right? If nobody else does the same thing.
Right.
So, we, what we need to do is lead by example, not just NIPA to the rest of the state, but the state, as the governor has pointed out, needs to lead, how, lead in actions that others can take in order to achieve this more nationally and globally. So, that has to be part of what we think about and it's a very complicated problem. You just gave one example of the complexity.
Sure.
But people need to understand that there can be a roadmap to get to an acceptable outcome. It's going to be difficult. It's going to be painful in some ways, but how do we, how do we, you know, mitigate those negative effects and take advantage of the positive effects while laying out a plan? And that's what I think is one of the things that we can do uniquely at NIPA.
Can I ask a follow-on? Because you referred to, you guys, you did a great job, to them as the future leaders of NIPA. And, you know, your presentation comes on the heels of just a couple of weeks ago, you know, high schools across the globe sort of having these walkouts of young people saying, you know, we're going to walk out for our future. So, I'm wondering, when we talk about talent management within NIPA to achieve these goals, are we changing job descriptions? Are we changing the way that we look for people so that this becomes much more of the way that we do business here and our expectations of folks who do come work for NIPA?
Well, we are changing the way we sort of brand positions. And so, this type of thing is really attracts mission-driven people. And so, that helps us because they're committed to our mission and what we have to do and they're really tied to the work, not necessarily maybe money or other things. And so, that's going to be incorporated just into our branding, but in terms of jobs and roles, we're certainly, you know, going to incorporate that into our recruitment and outreach process. We have partnerships now with, you know, schools out there that have sustainability programs, so we're really digging into that.
In the same way that, you know, when we did our big digitization initiative, it required that we create new positions and new skills in data analytics and other areas. So, we will see that coming out of this next strategic plan too, where there will be new roles that we don't even have in the organization today, that where we'll need new job descriptions and it'll be a lot of mission-driven people that was just mentioned, so.
We have 1,600 employees here. It seems to me that NIPA ought to have an education program for our own employees. If you can get them to do it.
Yeah, we've been, we've been talking, Judge, about that, especially, and I like to call it the science of climate change, because climate change can be very political very quickly. And we want to stay away on the political side of that.
Everything is very political very quickly.
Right? So, we need to do the science of climate change. So, we're thinking about partnering with, you know, science-based institutions, maybe like the Columbia University's Earth Institute. And their scientists, bring those scientists here, educate our employees, educate our partners and stakeholders to, you know, get us really grounded on the science of this. I think we have a unique opportunity and I like to steal, you know, Mr. Chairman, your term that you've used with us in the past, that, you know, there's no leadership if there's no followership, right? And so, we're thinking about NIPA leading and doing things, you know, showing other jurisdictions or other entities what can be done in the short term. And so, we're looking at things that's scalable and replicable, exportable, you know. So, we're going to be focusing on those kind of initiatives because climate change is a global problem. It's not really a local issue. We are uniquely positioned. We've always led, you know, we've done things others won't do or can't do, especially in the utility sector. And this is one area where we can do it. And, you know, we're doing it for NIPA, as you know, you know, for in the next board meeting. We're actually doing it in our reimagining of the canals. It will be the largest environmental restoration in the country, if not the world. So, we have two platforms where we're going to really make an impact on climate change and our help to bring along Puerto Rico and US Virgin Islands will be the, under the same theme, under the same imperative. And, you know, New York has always been the birth of important movements, right? The environmental movement started at Storm King. The women's voting rights started at Seneca Falls, your hometown, Judge. Civil rights, I mean, every important movement started in New York. The birthplace of electricity is New York. Thomas Edison started the electric utility business and Nikola Tesla in Niagara Falls. You know, we have, we have a record of leading, you know, New York is home of basically every citizen around the world. So, we have great channels to export our ideas and the learnings that we will derive. So, it's a very, very unique position that we have and we're, I'm proud that the team has rallied to meet this imperative head-on.
And just one other thing I wanted to add, that back in December, the board approved a five-year sustainability plan for the authority. So, we are leading by example in-house and that includes not only energy efficiency targets, but also cleaning, what I would say, our supply chain and really doing more than just in our own house, but also the business partners we also interact with, including, by the way, of putting over 100 charging stations at our own facilities across NIPA's footprint. So, we are probably one of the leaders with respect to internal sustainability program and what Carly and Matt are talking about is really taking that externally and showing others not only how we do it, but how they can bring the same kind of principles to their own businesses.
But I guess I'd be, maybe more of it's happening than I realize, but, yeah, listen to this. But yeah, listen to this, you know, I'd suggest that we put it to, you know, the Matts and the Carlys and their team to come back and tell us how we, NiPA, can further invest, further allow that it's, okay, how many millions should we invest to support the 1,600 employees of NiPA to accomplish, you know, the initiative? So that, yeah, we're literally investing in ourselves rather than investing, I get charging stations, all the other great work that's being done, but, you know, there, we're trying to boil the ocean. I mean, this is, okay, this is what we can do to invest in ourselves. And frankly, to have two people stand up and say they're, you know, they're mission-driven and they're motivated to be here, not, you know, not solely because of the paycheck that they're collecting, but the work we're doing and the opportunity they've got to change the world. Shame on us if we don't very directly and overtly support that and back that. So, yeah, I'd be really interested with, and I'm not sure what's going to be in the 2030 strategic plan in 60 days relative to this, but to really amp up their ask of us for, okay, Mom and Dad, I know you're not going to be around to see this, but, you know, this is what, you know, these are a few million, or these are the millions that we need today to start this movement and do the kinds of things you're asking about.
Well, you've, you've stated it very well, Mr. Chairman. That is what our strategic plan is going to be about. And it's certainly going to focus first on what NiPA can do in our own asset portfolio and with our own capital.
That which is totally within our control.
Exactly. And then what can we influence? So, you know, it's very much going to be about what.
But what can we control? This is about control versus influence. We're always influencing, whether it be Alcoa or the broader state issue. This is investing in that which is very controllable.
Exactly. So our, our plan is going to be centered on that. And we're going to have some actions to report back to. I don't want to get too far out ahead of that. But I think that, you know, the question is, what can we control? And where, you know, we got to go where the carbon is. And that starts with, what can we do to reduce carbon in our own operations? And then what can we do to control how the, control what's done in New York State in that respect as well?
Mr. Chairman, so if I may, so Carly and Matt, one of the most daunting aspects of climate change is trying to convince people that their individual actions are going to have any type of an impact.
Right, irrelevant.
On the program. Because I will take issue of one slide that you put on, and I loved your presentation, but every, all 18 million people in the state of New York could do all the things you said up there and will still flood and will still have sandies. Because while Russia and China and India continue to ignore, any of these standards continue to produce all of that carbon, we're not going to change anything. And I think a lot of the problems that we have in getting, in capturing people's imagination about this is to give them a, a expectation management that says that not only do we have, do we lead, but here in this, remember, we do hydro. We're already a leader in energy. It's, it's our whole mission. The governor's now said, we have to achieve these standards. Why? Because New York State is not a bubble. The things we do here won't affect the entire globe. But it, we can demonstrate through our examples that it is doable. It is sustainable. And I would just say, in your presentation itself, I'd just be, be careful about aligning the individual actions like turning off lights and taking stairs with actually stopping flooding on a global scale. I don't know if that's really the issue for us. The issue for us is, we have a dramatic platform that we demonstrated over time, which is one of the reasons why I joined this board, to continue doing the things that provide really good environmental energy alternatives. And we can do, and with this leadership, your leadership, we can do a lot right now here that's real and sustainable.
Well, I think it's further to the mission-driven focus and the opportunity we have. Yeah, every movement, you know, starts with the one little ripple in the water. And we all accept that tide is rising, but a lot of ripples, yeah, will dampen that. And that's what, you know, we have an obligation as well as an opportunity to, to lean into. So I hear you completely. But I think what you said is also a real endorsement and support for putting our money where our mouth is in terms of really providing the kind of leadership to affect the change that is as controllable as it can be for us. So.
And Mr. Chairman, it's controlled through our own assets, but we have this customer base that's also committed to this. And we want to work with them to, you know, to affect their operations in the way that is consistent with their goals.
Yeah, but I'd ask Matt and Carly or their cohorts to come back to us in a very explicit way. And so it's the, whatever, it's the Matt and Carly Fund, you know, it's their team in terms of how many million do they need to do their work and really, you know, make an impact? I'd love to hear that very directly from them as opposed to filtered through a broader planning process, that this is a bit of a carve-out initiative that we're going to invest in.
Thank you.
Does that make sense? Or, all right? Great job, you guys. I appreciate it. Well done.
Thank you.
And I promise, Mr. Chairman, it will henceforth be called the Matt and Carly Fund.
Yeah. And I'm sure they'll appreciate that. Yeah, I'm sure they'll appreciate that. All right. I don't think I've ever stood up here before. Seven years. I feel like, it's okay, any questions? You know, I'm usually the one asking the questions. So now's your chance. Anything you want me to cover while I'm up here? You know, so.
Just a dart rate, please.
Joe already nailed it, say it's green. That's all that matters. That's all that counts. So, all right, before we conclude the meeting with a couple of committee reports, I want to take a few minutes, in particular to recognize, as we've heard, our soon-to-be-departing CFO and Chief Strategy Officer, Mr. Lurie. And I think it's been referenced, and we all know, Bob will be retiring, at least from NiPA, next month at the end of April. And therefore, this is our last collective time together. So Gil and I will share a few remarks. We have a formal resolution as well as a video tribute to present. And then we'll give Bob an opportunity to share his thoughts as well. I'll start with a few prepared remarks and offer some personal reflections. Had forgotten or would have not passed the test that Bob and I started within a month or two together at NiPA in 2012. And so we've had literally concurrent experiences in supporting the tremendous contribution this organization makes for the benefit of New York's electric power system, economy, and environment. And Bob's leadership in financial matters and otherwise astute judgment have obviously been critical to NiPA's success over the last seven years, as well as to the very effective oversight of the Canal Corporation for the last three. As we heard again today, the high ratings accorded NiPA by Moody's S&amp;P as well as Fitch are really the foundation for our ability to provide low-cost, clean, reliable power and anchoring hundreds of thousands of jobs and investing in facilities, new technologies, and energy services. And Bob, we wouldn't have that favorable standing without you. But you've contributed so much more in recognizing the higher calling that NiPA plays as a public benefit corporation and as an essential instrument of state government. Your leadership, as we just talked again, in the development of our strategic vision and subsequent upgrades, your passion and commitment for what we do. Those plans and initiatives have become our North Star for supporting not only Governor Cuomo's ambitious clean energy goals, but for all of us and even better, meeting the needs of our customers. You've obviously been incredibly formative or the formative force, I would suggest, in the development of our moonshot initiatives for electrifying the state's transportation sector and steering future offshore wind and battery energy storage plans. And I also want to thank you on behalf of the entire board for your tremendous and continuous and always respectful counsel and support on a wide range of issues. You always respond in terms that all of us grasp and understand and benefit from. And as a result, you helped guide us to consistently make, or at least what we believe is consistently make the best decisions possible in carrying out our statutory responsibilities. On a bit of a personal note, given my background as a CPA, CFO, COO, CEO, I learned long ago that the world of finance is a combination of both science and art. And then Bob, we've got someone who's demonstrated for seven years that he's not only an outstanding scientist, but an even better artist. As we witnessed earlier today, he's never built a budget or a plan he can't beat. Now beating him 30 days into the new year. Better said, that combination of skilled scientist and savvy artist is the foundation on which you've earned the full trust and confidence of everyone around this board table and beyond. You're always incredibly calm under fire. In fact, you never even seem to feel the heat. And it's not because we haven't tried to turn it up. We consistently find a way to keep it simple, make it work, and solve the problem, both real and perceived. From my seat, you're a tremendous blend of investment banker, public finance exec, strategic thinker, energy industry expert, savvy negotiator. We were witness to that again today. Very strong leader as well as sage advisor. Makes for an ideal combination of intellect, experience, creativity, and practical know-how. As a result, you've consistently made all of us very, very comfortable and confident. And just like Allstate, we always knew we were in good hands. I can only hope our paths cross again in the years ahead. It'd be an honor to serve with you one more time. But I also accept it's probably wishful thinking on my part, because seven years with me as your board chair, it's probably more than any CEO should have, or CFO should have to endure. So Bob, on behalf of the entire board, thank you very, very much for your tremendous service to NiPA and everyone across our state who's benefited from the great work you've done. Be assured, you're leaving us in a much, much better place than when you arrived in 2012. Congratulations on a great, great run. We know the best is still ahead for you and your family. And enjoy all that comes your way. Thank you very, very much.
And then we'll do the resolution.
Got it.
Today, it is my great privilege to talk about my good friend, Bob Lurie. Bob joined NiPA at a critical juncture in our industry. Every utility, public or private, was rethinking how it would generate and transmit electricity in the coming era. The demand for new sources of energy was growing. So was the need for leaders who could think clearly about what needed to be done. Fortunately, Bob joined our senior leadership team at just the right time. And we made full use of his unique skill sets and insights. As our CFO, he guided this authority through a new turbulent financial period, a time when we were reconsidering many of our basic premises. Yet, through it all, NiPA improved and maintained its high ratings for its bonds. These ratings conveyed Wall Street's confidence in NiPA's financial strength. And they also demonstrated its confidence in our financial leadership. But that is only one part of Bob's story. Bob is also an extraordinary strategist and what I call futurist. Bob reads continuously and listens to podcasts on the most esoteric subjects. He would then discuss what he learned with us, the leadership team, in our meetings at senior staff gatherings and over lunches and dinners. Loves to talk about new developments in technology and science and how they will affect the flow of electricity through homes, businesses, and community. And because of his insatiable curiosity, he, his contributions to NiPA will be remembered for many years to come. They include developing our strategic vision 2020. They include launching our new Evolve, or our electric vehicle mobility program in New York, and our first mover position in battery storage. They include setting the stage for offshore wind development by analyzing the European experience. They include developing strategies to support the governor's ambitious Green New Deal plans for our state. And let mention one more important attribute of Bob. Bob is compassionate and caring. His work on the recovery of Puerto Rico's power system has been truly impressive. He has been a determined advocate for all kinds of exciting innovations that will have a huge impact in years to come. Bob is a model public servant. He is well-respected and well-liked through NiPA, throughout NiPA. He has been a great partner to me and the executive management team, senior staff, his department, and all of NiPA and canals. We wish him well, and we know that he will not be a stranger. Thank you. I have one more before, there is a letter here from our governor that I want to read. Dear Bob, I am proud to offer my warm congratulations and thanks as you retire from an exemplary tenure at the New York Power Authority. Since 2012, your leadership, skill, and dedication have made you an invaluable asset to NiPA, helping to build a cleaner, smarter, and more resilient power grid for New York while addressing many of our pressing energy and environmental challenges. Your expertise and guidance have helped immeasurably to modernize the authority, ensure its continued leadership, and place New York at the forefront of energy reform and the fight against climate change. On behalf of all New Yorkers, thank you for your years of leadership, service, and commitment. And congratulations again on your well-deserved retirement. Best wishes to you, Emily, and your family for much future success and happiness. Sincerely, Governor Andrew M. Cuomo. Let me do the video first and then we.
Oh, my God.
Thoughts when you were a little boy?
Bob, you only go, you only go once. I mean, we're going all out here for you, bud.
Current title? I'm the Chief Financial Officer and the Head of Strategy for NiPA.
I first met Bob back in the day of the Moreland Commission and looking at the restructuring of LiPA. And I was impressed then. It was a high-pressure situation. We had everybody's attention on us. And Bob walked in as cool as a cucumber, nothing ruffled Bob's feathers, nothing.
Bob is not only smart and a big thinker, but he's very eloquent. And he is an excellent communicator. He also cares a lot about NiPA and especially about our employees. And that comes through.
I strongly believe that NiPA has tremendous capabilities and assets that nobody else has that we can bring to this process, that is going to enable us, in this competitive environment going forward, to win that competition more often than not.
He's challenging you to think deeper and more, like, clearly and analytically about every single issue or problem. And so when it came to my business, he was always the first to ask really poignant business question that kind of cut through everything else I might have been talking about and got right to the root.
I think that's what he's best at, really, is having people question their assumptions, question the traditional way of thinking about certain projects. He's a very strategic thinker, so I think that's one thing he's helped me with and my staff.
He's the kind of guy that is always challenging you to do more, to reach a little further, to think about things in different ways.
Nice guy, family man, and his wife. And he's going to live out the second part of his life, and he's going to enjoy it. He's going to play golf, and he's going to do Pilates. So he's going to, he's going to have a good life.
He's a great collaborator. Enjoy working with him. Very good negotiator, just a great colleague, and we'll really miss him.
Your careful guidance and support has helped me grow both personally and professionally during my time at NiPA. Most importantly, it's given me the confidence to bring my true self to work every day. Thank you.
It really has been a pleasure working with you.